Please rise and like to start the meeting. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the physical liberty and justice for all. Evening, everyone. Welcome to Township of Oldbridge Zoning Board of Adjustment, September 4, 2025. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Oldbridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcement to the home news and Tribune, filing a copy of the announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Ms. Porcelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Andrews, absent. Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scagno, absent. Mr. Stoner?
Yeah.
Ms. Testaverde, absent. Mr. Singh, absent. Ms. Gomez?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here.
A couple announcements. One, this meeting is being televised here in the township on our cable station, which I found out is no longer on fifteen. It's another number. What's the number?
Thirteen hundred for now.
Thirteen hundred if you're at home. I don't know if my old TV goes up that high. Okay, all right. If you want, it's also being simultaneously sent out over YouTube Live. So if you want to refer back to a meeting, you can find them on YouTube. I'd ask everyone here in the courtroom, if you have your cellphone, please silence it so it doesn't interrupt the testimony tonight. We would appreciate that. I'll say for the record, there's only one application on tonight. While the agenda, if you read online, there were a total of four and three adjourned. I'll read them into the record a little later when we start with that. So there's only going to be the one, Prime Space Capital will be the only matter heard this evening. All right, having said that, I'm going to ask, this is Mr. Varga. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did, Mr. Chairman.
Pat Varga Esquire from the firm of Dasty and McGlucka.
That's correct, sir.
He'll be sitting in for Mr. Dasty, Jerry Dasty, this evening, who I understand is under the weather. We wish him well and a speedy recovery. Having said that, Mr. Varga, would you swear in our professional, Mr. Bernie Tetral?
Absolutely. So raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, having said that, I'm going to call the applications that aren't going to be heard, and then we'll go to the one that is going to be heard. Sixty-three dash twenty-two-four Z, that's eleven oh three Route thirty-five LLC. That matter's been adjourned. That's the applicant seeking to appeal the zoning officer's denial dated ten seven twenty-four of a zoning permit to establish a gentleman's club. This application has been adjourned to the public hearing on November twenty twenty-two-five. There will be further notice. Forty-one dash twenty-two-four Z Zahir Hussein, that's the R twenty zone, that was seeking C and D variance for a home addition. That's the physical location, and that's twelve Yosemite Court. Applicant proposes two-story addition to the rear of the existing home and deck over an existing patio. This application has been adjourned to the public hearing on September eighteenth, twenty-two-five. That'll be the next time we meet without further notice. So if you're here on that matter, it's not going to be heard this evening. Forty-seven dash twenty-two-four Z, that's Bergen Concepts LLC, also on the agenda this evening. Physical location there is three-six-nine-nine Route nine. That's for an LED billboard, seeking major preliminary and final site plan divergence. Applicant proposes to erect an LED billboard on the property. Application has been adjourned to public hearing on December fourth, twenty-two-five, with further notice. That does bring us to our only application that we'll be hearing this evening. I'll call it in. It's zero-three dash twenty-two-five Z. It's Prime Space Capital LLC. This is the R forty zone, residential. This is block one-eight-oh-nine-one, lots one, two, three, and eight. Physical location is twelve Pine Street, Oldbridge Self-Storage Facility. Applicants seeking a bifurcated use variance to develop a proposed three-story self-storage facility. This matter has been, was carried from June fifth of this year. Representing the applicant, Salvatore Alfieri Esquire. Sir?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board.
Go green. How about that one?
I'm not, I don't have technical abilities. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Dante Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. As the chairman stated, we were here back in June. We presented the application. I do have our same professionals from the previous meeting. We're going to present some modifications. We did take the board's comments, and we heard the public as well, so we did make some significant modifications to the application to hopefully address a lot of these concerns. So without further ado, I'm going to have our first witness come up.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name and expire your last for the record.
Josh Seawold, S.E.W.A.L.D.
And you'll qualify at the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to hear his credentials again?
No, we've, we've met him many times here on the board, and he's obviously still under oath, but thank you for putting him under oath again, just in case he forgot. I'm kidding, you know.
Good evening, everybody. Again, Josh Seawold from Dynamic Engineering Consultants. We were previously here in June, and we took a lot of the comments, feedback, both positive and negative from your board, and equally as important from the public. There, you had a lot of good feedback that came from the public residents, and what we have done since that June meeting is we went back to the drawing board. We talked with the applicant as well as with the architect, and we're here tonight for a revised plan set. So property condition stays the same. We don't need to go through all those existing conditions, history that we discussed back in June. Overall, it is still a Class A, three-story self-storage facility. And let me go through some of the modifications, which I think is paramount to the, the application that's before you. The exhibit that you have on the screen right now is actually the same rendering that we have from June. What we're about to ask your team member to put on is our new exhibit, if you wouldn't mind flipping over to that one. So this is a zoomed-in version. This is the site plan overlaid onto the landscape plan.
Just for the record, Mark, this is exhibit A three.
Perfect. It's today's date, September fourth, prepared by my firm. Same orientation as the prior exhibit, zoomed in. The building is the orange box. The dark gray area is the drive aisles and parking around it. Same orientation, you have Route eighteen running in that north-south direction on the right side of the plan and Pine Street. First major thing, which was a lot of feedback from your residents, is we would not like essentially a commercial driveway on Pine Street. We went back to the drawing board, look at the wetlands as well as the DOT clearance, and we have now eliminated completely the driveway from Pine Street. We are now proposing a write-in, write-out driveway on Route eighteen only. So there will be no impacts to the Pine Street driveway that goes back to the residential neighborhood. DOT permit has also been filed to the DOT. Next, we took a look at the overall footprint. There was some questions, comments, maybe some concerns on the scaling over the overall project. We decided to reduce the footprint from forty-one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty square feet to thirty-eight thousand and fifty square feet, which then further reduces the total FAR from one-hundred-and-twenty-three, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet to one-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-and-one-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet. Overall, what we were able to do was take that building footprint, shrink it, which then shrunk the overall total development area. The access aisle around the building is the same. It is able to accommodate our customers, fire trucks, trash trucks, box trucks. The overall parking count went from thirteen to eleven spaces due to the reduction of total floor area. We also prepared full civil drones. We won't be testifying to some of that today, but what is important to note was that we heard a lot of comments in the June hearing about drainage, concerns about the local area, the residents to the north of us as well. And we're here to testify, not on the new plans that got filed, but that we have done full testing of the soil, and we have designed a full drainage report, and we are confident to say and testify that the drainage system that's on this plan before you has been fully designed. The one that was in front of you in June was conceptual in nature because it was just a bifurcated use variance aspect. We're still here just for the bifurcated. We're not seeking the preliminary and final, but we wanted the public and the board to know that in the past ninety days, we have substantially dug in to ensure that the drainage depicted on the exhibit that's before you is going to function and make sure there's no negative impacts to this property or any of our surrounding residential neighborhoods. Lastly, we didn't present architecturals at the June hearing. We were kind of wrapping up, and everyone said, we'll see you in, in a few months. The original architecturals was a traditional climate-controlled self-storage facility, a little bit more commercial industrial look. There was a comment from the residents that said, if this is going to be here, can you make it look a little bit more residential character? And we did that. We understand it is still a commercial self-storage facility, but the architect completely redesigned the facade treatments to have those residential features. They have some peak roofs, a lot more windows, different materials that you would see associated with a new home. You have a lot of horizontal and vertical elements, and then there's even some peaks that you would see like a gable of a roof line that goes over the front door.
Just for the record, Mark, this is exhibit A four?
Yes, sir. Overall, we wanted to come back to the board, let you and the public, who I know is listening behind me, know that we heard all of your comments, and we went back to the drawing board to try to satisfy as many of those concerns as possible. We think now that we've been able to improve upon the overall development scheme and be able to improve upon the buffer now to Pine Street, so that when you do come down Pine Street, you're not going to see in the driveway, you're not going to see a commercial driveway, you won't even see towards the building, because there's over a sixty-five-foot landscape-heavy buffer along the Pine Street area. So as they continue to drive down Route eighteen through your community like they already do, they'll see a driveway to a commercial facility, but it won't just be a regular strip center or the local Dunkin' Donuts. It's going to be a modern Class A facility that now has that residential character, a little bit more of a buffer between Route eighteen to when their residential neighborhood starts. There's a lot more detail in the plans if you guys have any questions, but that's my high-level introduction and summary from where we were in June to what we'd like to present before you this evening, now that we're here in September.
Any questions? Mr. Tetral, do you have any comments?
Yeah, as I understand it, Environmental Resolutions, a firm I work for, had prepared a review letter back, I think, June third, and I don't know that there was a response letter necessarily. I do know that there was some revised, it was a revised traffic report dated July second, and some revised plans dated July third. I just got them recently, looked at them, in line with what my previous comments had been. Now, of course, you now have a significant change here because you moved the access from Pine Street to Route eighteen. I think you've already answered one of the questions that I had right off the bat, and, and these are based, I had indexed my, my comments based on the pages of the traffic impacts study. Had, you, you said that a DOT permit has been filed. Had, did, did you have any discussions with DOT? I mean, I'm a little concerned that, you know, you have access right now on Pine Street for that property. No access on Route eighteen, and under the proposed, putting it on Route eighteen. I know in the past, I've been involved with a lot of DOT access permits, both as an applicant and also when I worked on DOT projects. I, the term I think DOT used was reasonable alternative access, and, you know, if, the one thing you want to check here, if, you know, in conversation with DOT is that they're not going to consider Pine Street reasonable alternative access and deny your access on Route eighteen based on that. So have there been conversations with DOT, or?
So right behind me, sir, is my partner and colleague, Corey Chase, who's the traffic engineer.
Okay.
We'll be able to address some of those questions.
Okay, good, all right. So maybe some of these comments are, should I, I can wait on the traffic comments if.
If it's onsite parking circulation, happy to dabble with the civil, but if it's, if it's DOT and their requirements and regulations, I would defer to Mr. Chase.
Okay. I'll hold on the traffic part then, because, you know, then, then your, your partner can, can go through these, you know, portions of the traffic impact statement. I'll go to the plans. I did have some plan comments in my original comments, and then I looked to see if they had been addressed. Now, I understand this is not a final plan submission. This is only for use variance, as I understand, so.
That's correct.
I, I did go into some detail. Basically, it's, you know, then consider it as information that, you know, you should be looking into incorporating when, you know, if and when you get approval and go forward for, for a final, you know, preliminary and final site plan. Some additional stop signs, okay. Parking signs, if the township grants the waiver for providing, from providing any loading spaces. I understand that's a requested waiver. Plans didn't depict, depict any truck circulation, and so that's a concern here, you know, how, how trucks maneuver. I know the fire department will want to see how a fire truck maneuvers through the site. I believe you have a trash receptacle. You want to see the trash, you know, and if that's the largest truck, that's trucks that are anticipated, that's fine. Then it'd be some kind of sign posted that, you know, no trucks over whatever. Okay. The one concern I still have is site distances. You've got, the drive aisles are right adjacent to the building, and besides the maneuvering aspect, which, you know, with a two-way pattern, the traffic on the inside is, is got a, you know, there's no radius there. They got a ninety-degree corner to go around, so they're going to have to swing into opposing traffic maybe to, to make that turn, especially anything larger than a car. There's also the site, site, site distance issue. You know, the traffic is approaching at some speed, which, I mean, I, they can't, they can't really pick up a lot of speed going through here, but, you know, if they're not totally stopped at that corner and two vehicles come, you know, you might have a problem. I, I think I had originally suggested, if this thing's working or not, I think I had originally suggested a one-way traffic pattern in lieu of, in other words, come into sight from Route eighteen, all the traffic goes to the right and goes around, comes back out. That would eliminate any conflicts. Plus, then you would only have, the traffic, you know, wouldn't be hugging the building as they would if you have two-way traffic, so that, that's, that's a concern. Some signs on Route eighteen, I mentioned that, you know, now you have Route eighteen access. It's a bus stop located on Route eighteen just before the right turn into Pine Street. You know, there might be, maybe, you know, maybe this is a decision by the township, but consideration should begin for providing a sidewalk from this bus stop around the corner and, and extending maybe across the, the site's front edge along Pine Street. DOT may ask for sidewalk on Route eighteen. I'm guessing not, given the character Route eighteen in that area, but that's, you know, something they may ask for. Confirmation on the number of, it looks like you've got thirteen parking spaces, two are for EVs and one for ADA. Just confirm that they comply with all New Jersey and, you know, requirements for EVs and US, you know, requirements for ADA. Double yellow line between the building from Route eighteen up to the building. Existing right-of-way width is not shown on the plans of Route eighteen. In theory, DOT, Route eighteen, this is, in this area is a desirable typical section of one-hundred-and-fourteen-foot right-of-way. You know, they could ask for right-of-way dedication. I know they usually don't, but that, I guess that'll be something DOT would, would bring up. That's basically it on my comments, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, so a lot of the recommendations you just mentioned, I think we can easily accommodate. Certainly signage, we will comply with obviously any fire department comments with, with no parking, fire zone. To refresh the board and the public's memory, we are asking for a modification waiver for loading, and what we testified in June and just to rehash for tonight, self-storage, the way this place is going to function and operate, we don't have any, any external roll-up doors. It's very common, if you've been to other self-storage facilities, there's an exterior roll-up door, so you would essentially load in front of it. All of our activity is inside the building. So there are three entrances, one by the front office, and then two on the long sides of the building where you would park, bring everything in, and use the elevator to go inside. Yeah, that's a great, thank you so much for bringing that back up. So that thirty-foot aisle that goes around the building acts as essentially your temporary loading. It's not a delineated area like you would see at a commercial shopping center, a Wawa or ShopRite, but that is going to act as a loading. So although we still are seeking that waiver slash modification, it will absolutely function as that temporary loading facility. In regards to your board engineer's recommendation for one-way traffic, we think that's a great idea, and we can certainly incorporate that through the full site plan design. It is very common in self-storage to have pavement right up against the building based off the operational use that I just mentioned a few moments ago. They, you pull your car up close to the building, you unload your trunk or the back of your box truck, and you need to get into the building in the loading area. So it is common, usually at a, say, a strip center, you have front sidewalk, maybe a landscape island before the larger parking area. At a self-storage facility, when you have the drive aisles, you have it against the building. So it's a good recommendation that instead of having two-way traffic, to avoid some of the concerns your engineer has, sightlines and things like that, we'll make it one-way around the entire building, so there's just only one flow of traffic. And then essentially, you have a thirty-foot wide drive aisle for one lane, and just to give the boards a refresher, usually a one-lane driveway is about ten to twelve feet. We're providing thirty. And the reason it's thirty is so that you can have the fire truck, or the box truck, or the trash truck be able to maneuver around the facility. Just a point in reference, Pine Street, for example, is maybe even twenty feet wide. So our onsite driveway, which is going to have very limited traffic, Mr. Chase will talk about that shortly, will easily accommodate the handful of customers we have, let alone the fire apparatus and the other vehicles that'll maneuver through the site. So all the other recommendations your board engineer mentioned, happy to incorporate should we get passed and hopefully approved, the use variance aspect.
Sounds good.
I'm going to ask the board members if they have any questions.
Certainly.
I'll start at my left. Mr. Stoner?
No.
Okay. Mr. Izzo?
For the people that are coming in and out?
Yes, sir.
It's going to be the one entrance?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to come in with hand trucks or whatever to bring in their belongings to store?
Yes, usually the, this facility operator will have a hand truck that you can load your material onto, you'll bring it through the doors, and then if you're on the first floor, you just bring it down the aisle, or if you're on the second or third, you go to the elevator, bring you upstairs.
And that's the only entrance accessible for the people to bring their stuff in?
That's correct. All units are interior. You cannot access any of the units from the exterior. There are two loading entrances. You see one on the exhibit A four before you. There's the same thing on the north side. There is also an entrance at the front door, but that's for the office. That's not where you'll be doing any of your loading facility.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of curious. You say that they can park their cars along the side of the building, take out all their stuff with their doors open, unload, load it onto a hand car, and then go through the front door. It's only thirty feet. Now, if you have cars coming in, even if it's one-way, it seems pretty tight to me, especially, like you said, with the ninety-degree angles where your corners are.
So a typical two-way drive aisle in any commercial shopping center you've been in your community? in your community is 24 feet. So if you have 90-degree parking on each side, in between those two parking spaces is 24 feet. The applicant's proposing 30 feet. And now with modifying it to potentially one-way circulation, what you're only gonna have is a, is a car. Yes, you're right, with the door open or the back open. And then you have another 20 feet left over for a car or another truck to be able to go pass it.
I understand, but it still seems like it'd be very tight going around the corners, even with one-way, if you have a bigger day and people parked close, because everybody's gonna park close to the front door, let's face it. We're all lazy.
What you'll hear from Mr. Chase shortly, and not to sound like a traffic engineer, self-storage, although it's a bigger building, and we absolutely understand that, it really doesn't generate a lot of traffic. And that's not just my opinion or Mr. Chase's opinion. He has to rely on what the DOT is gonna agree that this traffic is gonna go through through this driveway. And we bring that back then for operations discussion in front of zoning, and then it also comes into play of how many parking spaces that we need. If this was a much higher-generated use, we would need to have a substantial amount of parking. Again, for example, just to keep referencing like a commercial development, a much more active and smaller building may not even have a 30-foot drive aisle. It is very common for my office to do a 24-foot drive aisle, which meets standards of IT and other engineering. So we are certainly confident that 30 feet is plenty. What we can also do is we can add some striping around the building, like a hatch, to keep people away from the edge of the building, and it'll look like nice yellow or nice white, whatever your recommendation of your engineer is. That way, it's a more delineated access aisle. We can bring that down to 24 feet, so then you'll have a nice six-foot striped area along all sides of the building, so that you never know that you're getting too close to it.
Okay, my next question is, I guess it's for traffic, though. I'd like to know when you filed for the DOT letter.
Say it again.
I'd like to know when you filed with the DOT for the letter of no interest or everything.
So we're not going for a letter of no interest. It will be a brand-new access permit. And between June and tonight, we didn't just file for the DOT, we submitted to everybody.
And you DEP, letter of interpretation for the wetlands, but you have no answers on it yet?
No, so we have an LOI on the property already.
You do?
Yes, ma'am. When we were here in June, we submitted use variance strong, so it's really just include the conceptual site plan that was presented before you on Exhibit A2, and then a conceptual landscape plan. Since June, we did full drawings so that we could testify to lighting, landscaping, utilities, even though we're not here for preliminary and final major site plan, we wanted to have more data because of the questions from you guys and the public. In addition to that, we then submitted to all outside agencies who are gonna be a part of the site plan process, including the DOT. So it won't be an LOI, L-O-N-I for the DOT. It'll be a minor access permit.
Okay, good. So what is the date for the LOI for, from the Department of Environmental Protection?
Give me one second.
You gave me time, it's fine.
I'll have to get back to you on that date, but it is delineated on our plans as well. So the wetlands line and the associated 50-foot buffer around them are locked in. That was done well prior to when we made the June application.
Right. And when, in June, wasn't there an issue with the buffer from Route 18 to where your building was, too?
One of the modifications, there's a couple that are outlined in the ERI letter, talks about having a 75-foot, pretty much no development buffer from Route 18. Our testimony in June was that we wanted to maximize the rear portion of the buffer. And not to sound like a planner right now, but we talk about C2 variances and alternative planning. We can shift this layout. So should you approve the use variance, but then not approve those buffers, this layout would just simply shift to the west. And we would not encroach upon any buffer or bulk standard to the western residential property line. We are seeking those modifications because we'd like to keep the development up towards Route 18 to maximize the buffer to the back. So that was a little bit of our testimony in June, and we've continued to do that here.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
So the orientation of the building stays the same, correct? It hasn't, it hasn't changed? I know there was, someone asked, I think, to change it 90 degrees.
Yes.
But it's gonna remain the same. Is the buffer from Pine, has anything changed on the location of the building, or it remains the same? I know there's not gonna be any entrance, but it's still 95-foot back? I think that's what you testified to.
I'll give you the two separate dimensions. So because the footprint got smaller, the buffer to Pine Street actually improved. So back in June, our, the setback was, my apologies, the buffers to Pine Street and to the rear western property line, the building's in the same location. The buffer gets better because we eliminated the driveway that was on Pine Street. Now it's more uniform. There's not a cut-through that you can see through it. So you're correct, Mr. Chairman. The distance from the legal right-of-way of Pine Street to the edge of the building, the same.
And it hasn't moved to the west any, correct?
It has moved closer to the west, so.
So it's closer to, it's closer to the residence?
Closer to Route 18. I'm sorry, my directions are off.
Okay, west.
114 feet is locked in to the residence. What we testified in June, same tonight in September. What we did was we shrunk the building and made it longer, so it got closer to Route 18.
What I see on there, on this picture, it looks like there's added buffering to the west. As we look, west would be to our left as we look at the picture.
That's correct.
And there has been, it looks like more landscape, landscaping that you've done there?
Substantially. There was a lot of comments at the prior meeting, and just to read into the record a little bit.
Sure.
We have 53 shade trees now, 32 ornamental trees, 48 evergreen trees, 21 evergreen shrubs, and another 145 deciduous shrubs. So basically, every little circle that's different green shades on that is a proposed planting. Anything that you see is in light green is existing trees that we will not be modifying. So you see, Mr. Chairman, on the west side, there's a lot of that light green. Well, that's out there today and we don't want to touch it. Well, then we further added some additional circles to enhance and add to that buffer.
And in the bottom left-hand corner of that picture, there's a kind of a tanish, is that the lot, that's the home?
That is an existing dwelling, correct.
What would the resident see now that you've changed, I guess, the positioning? Well, I don't think you've changed the positioning, but you've added landscaping. Are they gonna be able to see your building? Obviously, at the height, they may, but I'm talking about.
From a sightline standpoint, sir, they won't be able to see it.
Will not.
Correct. I have not done an inventory of every single tree. Should some of those trees maybe be deciduous, then you may be able to see through the branches during a certain time of year. But we are 114 feet from building structure to the property line, which means there is a 84.7-foot buffer of existing trees and new landscaping. And what we've done is we've packed in as many trees as we can in that new area. And if ERI has any additional species recommendations or the board has species, we can certainly look into it. But the goal here was give them the biggest buffer that we can. I'd also like to point out that the standard of the residential zone, which is a little odd, only allows a 50-foot setback. We're overdouble that because we understand the sensitivity of commercial next to the residential. So if you are standing in their backyard, you have 84 feet of existing woods, some wetlands, and then new trees before you get to the first curb and pavement, and then another 30 feet before you get to the back of the building.
In this depiction, you drive in from Route 18, would that be the face of the building where entrance to the office would be?
That's correct.
And I see that there's parking stalls?
Yeah, all the parking is on the eastern front facade. In the bottom southern-eastern corner is where the office is located.
All right. And you're gonna talk about drainage?
Yes. Overall, the, again, I know it's not, we're not talking about preliminary and final major site plans, but we did the work, so we.
Well, you brought it up, that's why I'm asking.
Absolutely. Because we knew there were some concerns at the prior meeting. So we did testing. We identified where the seasonal high was. We did the permeability testing of the soil. And we've designed a system to comply with the four prongs of stormwater management: quantity, quality, groundwater recharge, and green infrastructure. How are we gonna do that? We have a large above-ground infiltration basin. That's the gray polygon shape that's to the north of the building. In addition to that, there will be a porous pavement section, and we really need that in order to satisfy the green infrastructure regulations. Finally, back in 2023, the state of New Jersey updated their stormwater regs, not just for the 210 and 100-year storm, the projected runoff that's gonna be here in the year 2100. And our stormwater system complies with all those four prongs and the future projected runoff weight. What does all this mean in normal language? Basically, what is out there today is generating some type of runoff, because there's a bunch of structures out there, and there's no stormwater management facilities. The state of New Jersey says not only do you have to maintain that existing runoff, you have to reduce it in the post-development condition. So if the site is generating very little runoff, the new project, regardless of use, has to be way less in the 210 and 100-year storm. So this system will guarantee that there will be less runoff going off the property than what is happening today. That's an improvement to the parcel, complies with state standards, your ordinance as well, and then further helps some of the residents in the area in the sub- watershed.
Mr. Seawald, there's a picture of, I don't know, is that gonna be detention basin? Is that a, if it were approved, is that what that picture?
It'll be an infiltration basin.
Infiltration basin. Would you know the distance that maybe you could put on the record? Some of the people here tonight that I recognized from the last meeting, so they're probably gonna ask you the same questions.
Yep.
What's the distance from the end of the road, in other words, the back of the building as a, was it 25-foot, did you say the roads?
30.
30. So from that 30-foot, how far back can you touch? Only, only that infiltration basin, right? And you're not going to do anything to those woods that are already there, correct?
No, they're protected by wetlands.
Right. So there's a street back there, it's called Darwin Road. It would, it would be in the other end of the wooded area.
Yes, sir.
You're not getting anywhere near that?
No, sir.
Okay. Would you, would you guess, or if you have the plan, could you tell a guesstimate or a pretty factual amount of the distance?
Certainly can. The edge of the corner of the building, so the northwest corner, is 389 feet to the closest corner of a property next to Darwin Road. Obviously Darwin Road is angled, it's not a rectangle, so that distance keeps getting larger and larger. So from the edge of the northwesternmost corner of our self-storage facility to the closest corner of Darwin in our western property line is 389 feet. So you drop that down to 359 feet after the 30-foot drive aisle. From a, to the edge of the basin, which is a hole in the ground, it would be approximately, it's down another 150 feet, so you're looking at 200 feet from the edge of our stormwater basin to the property line. And all that area in the 200 feet is already protected by the DEP with wetlands, buffers, and existing trees. None of that will be modified.
Then that's fairly heavily forested, right?
I would say it is very forested. It's never been developed before. The trees are over 50 feet tall.
If I were at a house on Darwin, would I see the building?
I substantially.
Well, I guess, I guess maybe in the dead of winter, perhaps, but.
Remember, when you have a large forest, you have tall canopies. So could you, through an angle in the wintertime, through the trees, maybe see a development? Certainly. But I believe then you would be seeing the existing building today and maybe even Route 18 currently. But it is, in my opinion, that through the majority of the year, with the existing full growth of the forested area, there's gonna be very limited amounts that you will see of this site.
All right, thank you. Counsel, do you have anything for the witness?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions.
All right, anybody else? Are you gonna put anybody else on?
Yes, we have traffic testimony, and we do have our planner available if there's any questioning.
Sure. You can continue.
We'll have our traffic expert come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seawald.
Absolutely.
And you were put under oath at the June meeting.
Correct.
So you can consider yourself still under oath. Would you just tell the public what you do and who you were?
Yes, certainly. Good evening, everyone. Cory Chase with Dynamic Traffic. It's good to be back again. I provided the traffic testimony at the prior hearing. Just, you know, as Mr. Seawald mentioned, the primary change from a traffic perspective is the fact that we eliminated the driveway on Pine Street. And as he mentioned, we submitted the NJDOT for a minor access permit for the proposed right-and-readout driveway on Route 18 southbound. The application was deemed complete on August 29, 2025, so we do have a completeness, a letter of completeness, as well as the application number from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. So it's currently under review. They're supposed to get us comments within 30 days, so approximately at the end of September, we would have comments from the Department of Transportation. I heard some of the comments that Mr. Tetrel made regarding traffic, so just to touch on a few of those points. We haven't had any direct conversations with DOT yet, other than submitting the application. The lot is conforming with the access code, so we are permitted a driveway along the Route 18 frontage. Certainly, if they express any concerns, we would provide them with the feedback that we received as part of the application to the township, letting them know that we had originally contemplated a long Pine Street. But based on some concerns that were expressed, we're choosing to now relocate that access to Route 18 southbound. We did, as Mr. Tetrel mentioned, we did update the traffic impact study. It was last revised July 2, 2025. Just to reflect, again, the revised access configuration, now all the traffic will directly access Route 18 southbound rather than the intersection with Pine Street to get to Route 18. No significant changes in the operational conditions. The site driveway would operate at acceptable levels of service. We reviewed the site access and the circulation with Mr. Seawald, and certainly with consideration of Mr. Tetrel's recommendations to go to a one-way circulation counterclockwise around the building. It'll certainly open, as Mr. Seawald mentioned, it's already an oversized drive aisle to account for vehicles potentially parking adjacent to the northern and southern building facades. Certainly going to a one-way circulation pattern will make that even more free-flowing and open it up to accommodate U-Haul, delivery trucks, as well as the garbage truck and emergency vehicles from the township. So as you heard me testify at the prior meeting, self-storage facilities are one of the lowest traffic generators in the IT land use code, so it's not a significant traffic generator. It's why it only requires a minor access permit from the New Jersey Department of Transportation and not a major access permit. So we're confident that we will get that from the state in due time. And again, the revised access circulation pattern certainly will provide safe and efficient access to the site. So yeah, happy to answer any questions that the board has or any questions that Mr. Tetrel had that I didn't identify in my direct testimony.
Sure, we'll throw it back to Mr. Tetrel.
Yeah, thanks, Cory. I think that the DOT permit question's kind of been resolved. The one thing, I guess that when these permits go into DOT, a copy is sent to the municipality, so there should have been a copy provided to the township, I guess, at that time and all that. I guess somebody has it. I haven't seen it, but.
Yeah, that's correct. That was submitted. It's all done, the minor access permits are being done electronically now, so it's actually through their new e-permitting system, so we do, but we still do have to provide copies of the township and county submissions.
Okay, all right. So that was, okay, that was copied to the township. The other comments that I had, not too significant, I don't think. I had had a comment and the revised didn't answer about when the data, when the review of existing condition was conducted. Not that big of a deal. The, I'm sure it was recent. On page seven, under the site access and circulation, it says, "Review of site plan design indicates the site can sufficiently accommodate a large wheelbase vehicle such as a single-unit truck." As I mentioned, when Josh testified, there's no circulation plans on the site plans. I understand it's not preliminary or final, and I'm assuming that'll all be included, preliminary and final.
Yeah, that's correct.
They'll need to contact, I'm sorry.
That is correct. Not to interrupt you, sorry, sir.
That's okay.
We did, we did do the emergency vehicle refuse truck and a single-unit truck, so those will all be included as part of the site plan submission.
Okay. The one thing with the, the fire apparatus, need to contact the fire department, determine what their largest vehicle is or will be in the future if they're buying an even larger fire truck. So they would need to coordinate with the fire department on that and get their blessing on, on the circulation plan and along with, I'm sure, other fire-related items, you know, that are not traffic-related. Let me see. Uh, under parking, uh, I kind of checked it based on IT parking generation, um, and I think there was less than what is proposed, so it looks like you're good based on that. Um, the traffic state did note that 17 spaces would be provided. I think township ordinance is for 25, uh, so I guess that would be a, some kind of a waiver variance there for that. Uh, and, uh, let's see if there's anything else. Uh, I think that's basically it for, you know, on my comments on the, on the traffic study, so.
Thank you.
Didn't you say something about going to 13?
We had originally previously proposed 13, uh, based on the reduction in building area and the reduction, uh, in the impervious, we did drop down to 11 parking spaces. So those are the dedicated striped spaces adjacent to the eastern building facade. Uh, as Mr. Seawald mentioned, if it was in the township's preference, we could certainly stripe areas adjacent to the building, which would effectively serve as additional loading slash parking areas.
Just to confirm, you still, just for my notes, and I apologize, you still have the two EV parking spaces, right?
That's correct, and one ADA space as well. So we do, you are correct, we do get a, a credit for those EV spaces, so.
Maxed out at five, so you're 16 total when 25 is proposed.
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah, you mentioned about the, you know, striping, and this is all stuff that can be worked out when, when we get into preliminary and final. Probably some kind of striping, uh, you know, to identify where the loading area would be, I guess, and also, uh, to allow, as you get near the corners, basically that, you know, nobody's going to encroach, you know, on that corner area and, and, you know, and the signage will probably reflect that too, you know, that identify. That was a comment I had about identifying where the, uh, you know, the loading areas were and the signage and all that, but these are details that can be resolved later, sure.
Anything else, Mr. Chase?
That's it, sir.
Board members on my left, for, for the traffic engineer, Mr. Chase. Coming down the line, vice chair?
No.
I have nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Counselor, any, I think you asked the question you needed to ask.
Nope, Ms. Chairman, I'm good. I just needed that clarification.
Okay, very good.
Chairman, we have, uh, nothing further, so we, we would like to open it up to the public if it's.
Okay.
Your purview.
You said you have your planner here.
I do.
I don't think anything's going to change, right? Her testimony would, would, I guess, be the same?
Yeah, I, it's, it's essentially going to be the same. The layout changed a little bit coming off of 18, if you, if the board would like to hear some testimony.
Let me ask them, because, uh, I want to give you every opportunity to clear up any problems that people may have in their minds.
Certainly.
Would you like to hear anything from the planner as to the new setup? I don't think it changes anything, but if you want to hear.
Actually, yeah, I do. I want it on the record for positive criteria.
Okay.
Certainly. So we're going to call up our planner, Mr. Tykina.
Perfect.
All right, sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm and tell truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
John Tykina, T is in Thomas, A I, K is in Kelly, I, N is in Nicholas, A.
Over to you, counselor.
Uh, Mr. Tykina, can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Certainly. I'm a licensed planner in Jersey, have been, completed my studies at Rutgers University in 1992. I spent the last 32 years, uh, doing this, testifying before planning and zoning boards and commissions across the state and around the country.
Testified before this board before as well.
I have, uh, several times.
Yes, we'll, we'll accept your credentials and your expertise.
Thank you.
Mr. Tykina, you've reviewed the, um, the transcript from the previous meeting.
Correct.
Ms. Caphone was here at the previous meeting. Um, you've heard the testimony from the previous meeting and tonight. Take it away.
Certainly. Uh, so the site, again, for the use variance, there's really four things we need to show. One is, uh, particularly suited, two is, um, we meet some purposes, we advance some purposes of zoning, three that we reconcile why was it a zone this way, the Medici criteria, that is always our negative criteria. Um, so like Ms. Caphone testified, again, we are particularly suited, um, by, by the virtue of a large size of the property, eight and a half acres. Its presence on Route 18, which is only, uh, further established by having it now a driveway on Route 18, which is really going to go to our negative criteria, uh, in terms of really limiting, uh, further impact on Pine Street. Um, and, uh, you know, so, so again, those things, the location on 18 and, uh, being able to get off Pine really goes to our particular suitability for this site. In terms of advancing the purposes of zoning, I'd submit to you, we'd have purpose E, um, providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses in accordance with their environmental requirements. And, uh, purpose I, promoting desirable visual environment through good civic design arrangement. And purpose M, uh, encouraging the coordination of the various procedures affecting land development with a view towards, uh, lessening the cost of that development and to the more efficient use of the land. So here, uh, we have sufficient space, we have a large site that, uh, can accommodate the use that's in question. We have, um, even though it is zoned residentially, we still meet the residential, um, standards, particularly in terms of, of lot coverage and, and impervious coverage. So we are well below even what would be low standards, uh, as it relates to, uh, coverage for the, for the use, and we, of course, we meet all of our setbacks. We have substantial setbacks, 114 feet to our residences, our residence to the west, and over 380 feet to our residence to the north. So again, we, we are, uh, well situated on the site. Um, again, we think it's an attractive building, uh, the changes that we made to enhance the residential look of the building with the additional peaks, with the improvements in our residential-type materials, and most importantly, the reorientation to Route 18 are critical things that, um, really enhance the environment there. And then finally, uh, providing for, uh, coordination of all the various procedures. Um, for us, you know, the DOT procedure is the first and foremost, then our DEP procedures, and then our county, and then obviously the township. So all those things are important. Uh, we are using the land efficiently. We're redeveloping a previously developed commercial site, uh, throwing that out at a, at a perfect green field, but we still are able to, as Mr. Seawald testified, preserve almost 80% of the site in its existing and original condition with that substantial landscape buffer to our north. And then finally, in terms of our negative criteria, um, again, by relocating off of Pine Street, that's having less of a, an imp- traffic impact on our Pine Street neighbors. Um, that allows us to also additionally buffer that Pine Street, uh, uh, frontage so that we don't have the driveway that cuts through, that you're going to be able to see the building. Now we're going to be able to have that full 65 feet that can be well landscaped, as Mr. Seawald testified. Um, and in terms of your master plan and your zoning ordinance, um, even though it is residentially zoned, your master plan reexamination in '22 did talk about extensively, uh, looking closely at the Route 18 and Route 9 frontages, um, for areas that should be, uh, zoned better for economic development and, uh, for better utilization, uh, as opposed to their existing residential, um, designation. So again, your master plan acknowledges that there are areas, uh, along the township roads, uh, along particularly Route 18, uh, where we do have residential, where again, some of your, um, SED districts and your economic development districts are more appropriate. And I think this is one of those cases where, now, we do have a, you know, we have the ability to, um, you know, provide for a commercial use that is the lowest impact commercial use that we could possibly do. I mean, uh, Mr. Chase's testimony, uh, was, was very clear in that regard. Uh, if we put a Dunkin' Donuts on here, that would be 2,000 square feet, it would have, you know, 10 or 20 times the traffic, um, that this does. And this, uh, it will be a much, it's, it's a great quiet neighbor, and as far as residence next door, it's about the quietest neighbor that you can get. Um, and that's, that's a good thing from a negative criteria standpoint. So for those reasons, I think the board has the ability to grant the approval. That's requested, and I'm available for your questions.
Mr. Tetrel, do you have any comments with the planner?
No, I do not.
Let me ask you this. Do you know of any recommendations, which you mentioned, that the township has made to change this R40 zone?
No.
And the comments you're making, we have to bear in mind that it is still R40.
Yes.
So whatever cur- commercial entity wouldn't fit in there. There's a few I know, daycare centers, et cetera, by right, but, uh, there would be very limited.
Correct. I was merely looking for the littlest building I could think of. Um, but the, the daycare example that you cite is actually a very good one. To say that, that would be a use, that would be permitted in the R40 zone, that, um, would be much, much higher traffic impact, uh, even a modest daycare facility, um, than this use. Um, it's actually a great example. That's why we listen to our boards.
Okay. I'm going to go down to my left. Mr. Scormas, anything? Mr. Stoner? Sarizo? Vice Chair?
Yeah, I'd like you to comment on how it's going to impact the value of the residents around this building. Is it going to increase or decrease their home values?
I believe it'll have no impact whatsoever.
I'm sorry?
I believe it'll have no impact whatsoever. If they're going to go up or down, they'll go up and down on their own, not that there's a self-storage facility on the end. It would not be considered a, a noxious or detrimental use from a value standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
And Counselor, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Tykina, for putting that on the record. Uh, you have no other witnesses that you're going to have tonight, right?
No, we do not.
All right, then I'm going to go to a public portion.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, guys, sir, if you want to step down. All right, this is, uh, 032025Z. This is, uh, Prime Capital Space. We're going to open up the public portion. Physical location, here's 12 Pine Street, Old Bridge for self-storage facility. Uh, I see there are some familiar faces. I will wel- still welcome you to, uh, to speak before the board, should you have any questions. They have changed the plan, uh, somewhat. Anybody interested in that, now is the time to raise your hand. Please come up, sir. We'll get, we'll get to everyone. Uh, do we have, is this microphone working, Jake? Just push the button? Oh, you have a button up, sorry.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm and tell truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
James McNally, M-C, capital N-A-L-L-Y.
And just provide your address, please.
14 Darwin Road.
Thank you, sir.
And I know you spoke at the last, uh, at the last time we were together, Mr. McNally.
I did.
Please feel free.
My, uh, my concern at that time was the drainage. As I stated, we have a high water table there, uh, heavy rains, I get flooded. So my concern was that this would exacerbate that problem. They're telling me it won't. I have to take them at their word. Um, my concern right now is the size of the structure. Does it have to be three stories? You know, in, in that neighborhood, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. Uh, I don't think it's, it fits the landscape of the neighborhood, but that's my, you know, uh, opinion. Uh, my other concern was it was stated at the last meeting that I was at that Suburban Caps is not being forced out of that space. Suburban Caps has been there for 30, 40 years. They've been a fantastic neighbor. You don't hear anything coming out of that lot. And it was stated at that meeting last month that they're not being forced out. Uh, I have subsequently found out that they are being forced out. They are heartbroken that they have to lose their business. Uh, it's a family business that they were leaving to their children, and now they're at wits' end. They don't know where to, where to go, what to do. Uh, again, they've been there for so long, and they've been such good neighbors, and now they're being forced out, as opposed to what was said, you know, last month.
I thought, my recollection was that they bought, bought, or you have a contingency by?
It's a contingency by.
So I don't know.
We're not aware, we're not aware of that comment.
Counselor, to comment, it's, this is a real estate issue. I don't know, you're saying that he's being forced out, I.
Ultimately, Mr. Chairman, it is, it would be a real estate contractual issue, but it has no bearing on the board's decision whether or not there was any force or there's any contractual issues. This is, it certainly is a good concern, but it's outside the board's jurisdiction to consider and evaluate in the application.
Why is that?
Why? Because the application is governed by the municipal land use law, specifically two sections of the statute under 4055D, 70D1 and D4, and D4. And under that section, there's essentially two cases. One is the Medici case, which sets forth positive and negative criteria, which the applicant's professionals testified to. And the other one is the Coventry case, which deals with the D4 and whether or not the property can adequately satisfy the, essentially, the intensity of the use subject to an increased FAR. So those are the proofs that they have to show, and that's what the board considers.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I know, but that's, we asked why, because this is what the board evaluates. So the testimony and the questions and the focal of your comments, that's what the board gauges. So this outside information is certainly worth discussing, but it's outs- unfortunately, this board doesn't have a arm in the fight for that.
Maybe they should.
In short, it has, that has no bearing on the, the board's decision whether there is some coercion, if, if that's what you're alleging. I don't know.
No, no, I'm not.
I'm assuming that, that the, this, uh, Prime Capital LLC, uh, is in the business of buying properties and putting up structures, and I don't know, it's just limited to, uh, this type of, uh, structures, but other structures. So if they engage in a sale of, of an owner who wants to sell his property, once the property's sold, it's not really the owner's decision on what goes there. It'd be like you selling your home. The new person comes in and puts up, puts a pool in. You, you didn't want a pool in that, but you don't own it anymore. I'm trying to just make it in common sense, so we don't decide on who's buying what. We decide on whether or not we should approve or not approve an application based on its merits.
I'm just, I'm just pointing it out because, because it was asked specifically.
Yeah.
Are they being forced out? And it was absolutely not, they're not being forced out.
Well, the business, if they buy, if they buy the property, obviously the business isn't going to be there anymore. And I guess the person has the right not but, not to sell the business. Is the person, is Suburban Caps the owner of the property? I don't know, I don't know who they are.
I have no idea. Okay, I don't know.
So it, it's really irrelevant to, to the board's actual decision.
Okay, fair enough.
But, uh, he may be a tenant there, I don't know.
I don't know either.
Yeah, I know it's been there forever, um, figuratively speaking, and he may just be leasing land or renting land, whoever the owner of, of that person is. They haven't come before us, so, uh, I haven't heard that, but that, that, that's up to the landlord, whoever, um, who actually owns that land, to engage in a, a real estate decision. It's certainly not, it has nothing to do with this board.
Okay, fair enough.
But thank you for the information, sir.
Okay. Again, so my main concern is the, the height of the structure.
Who else? Yes, ma'am.
Please raise your right.
I know you testified, again, we'll put you under oath as well.
Sir, do you swear or affirm and tell truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
Yes.
Please just state your name and spell your last for the record again.
Amory Alexander, A-L-E-X-A-N-D-E-R.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, so yeah, I live on Darwin Road, and I'm, I've lived there for over 25 years, and I could see this area from my home. I mean, water has to go somewhere. It has to go somewhere. Um, but this is a residential street. Like, you know, you gave us all these reasons as to, to why it'll be okay. We don't need a 114,000-square-foot storage facility there. What benefit does it do for Old Bridge? There are six storage facilities within five miles of this space. I called them all. I could rent space in any one of them today. So you could put a bow on this, you can make it all pretty, you know? It's still three stories, 114,000 square feet on Pine Street. There's not even a sidewalk on Pine Street. There's a reason that they need 16 million variances for this, because it's not supposed to be there. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a, an engineer. I have common sense. not a lawyer. I'm not an engineer. I have common sense. I just have common sense. There's no need for this here. I've lived there forever. I love my woods behind the house. I love my owls. I love my birds. You're going to screw it all up. So you could say you're going to do this. You're going to make it pretty. It's still three stories, a storage facility we don't need. I kind of would think it would be cute to have a little daycare, one floor. So this isn't even a traffic thing for me. I don't think this is going to cause that much traffic. I think that, I don't know, the two years it takes to build it, that's going to be fun going up and down Pine Street for two years, right? When you're getting ready for all this drainage, that to me, I think of pipes. I think of a lot going on for two years when I try and go home for two years up Pine Street. So this definitely is not the best thing for this area. The best thing for that area is another house. It's a residential street. Leave all caps alone. Again, they've been there, whatever. Put a house there. I don't know. Again, like, I'm not a Harvard grad. That's just common sense. I had asked you all to drive by there. I hope you did, because it just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Anyone else want to be heard? Come up, ma'am.
Good evening, Chairman Sullivan. Nina Jocnowitz, 203 West Greystone Road, Old Bridge, New Jersey.
Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm, tell truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Do you state your name and spare your last for the record?
I do have a question about that. I did already do that. So it's-
It's honestly for the benefit of the court reporter who's got to type in.
Okay. I do wonder why we have to state our name and address here. Just a question. Council meetings actually just the opposite. They don't want us to state our name and address.
There's two reasons. One, because during this hearing, it's actually sworn testimony and comments that the board is taking. So your name does have to be built into the record for, say, example, somebody sues, we know who's talking. Secondly, under municipal land use law, there's, they have to prove, there's a question of whether or not there's a detrimental impact to the neighborhood. And one of the board's consideration is, what are the people's comments as they live in the neighborhood? So when you provide their address on the tax map, that's on all the board's applications. They can see, oh, wow, you actually live right next door. So then they can gauge your testimony, gauge its credibility, and that's how they get to evaluate it. So it is very important, and that's why.
Okay. I mean, you didn't take any of that into consideration for the 26 residents who lived on Old Mattewan Road for the giant ridiculous memory unit that's not a memory unit anymore. But that said, I don't understand why you're going to build a three-story commercial building.
I'm just really sorry. I just do need your name again, just for the court reporter.
Sorry, ma'am. Nina Jocnowitz. Do you need my address again? J-O-C-H-N-O-W-I-T-Z, 203 West Greystone Road.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
I'm surprised that there's actually a court reporter typing away. That's cool. But thank you. I do have a few questions. Why is there that we are, is this going to be pilot money, by the way? Not that the zoning department, the zoning committee actually looks at it, but I'm just wondering, are you guys going to be pilot money? Are you going to be taxed? Taxed. So it's going to actually have some, something potentially positive for Ward 6. How much is tax money based on something like this? Estimated, of course, sir?
We don't have that calculation. That would be determined by the tax assessor.
In the past, you have three-story storage units like this built?
Again, I don't have that information.
Josh Seawold from Dynamic for the record. Just to further add on to that, we want the public to know that finances can't come into any discussion of a year.
I understand that.
I know. I just, I wanted to put that on the record, that whether it's a dollar or 100,000 or 200,000, it can't be a part of our application. But to answer your question, ma'am, it will range between 100 and 200,000 dollars, based on my experience doing other three-story within Middlesex County.
Okay, so between 100, between 100 and 200,000 dollars for a-
I'm going to have to ask-
Estimate. I apologize.
No, no, I just got to, because this is a legal issue.
Okay, I'm not, I understand. I won't ask it again.
Okay, thank you.
How much is square footage?
114,000 square feet approximately.
And what is the average square footage of a home in that area?
I have not analyzed the existing homes on Pine Street, if they're existing.
Between 1,000 and 2,000 square feet. And they pay about 10,000?
We can't talk about taxes. You got to stay away, because taxes, it's something that could, it would be reversible if it's ever considered as a part of the application. Let's assume the board denied it. And they denied it because of taxes. It's an automatic reversible error. Can't consider taxes.
Understood. So right now, it's zoned residential, or a portion of it is, correct?
All of it is.
All of it is zoned residential?
Correct.
And you can't build something over on Bordentown Road in the residential, in the industrial area? I mean, where there's better access for buses, trucks, and residents, you know, off of Bordentown Road where all that commercial land is contaminated land? Instead, you're going to, like, cut down trees and forests, as the young lady over here said, you know, affect the owl population? And we know that there's a lot of amphibians and turtles and other things in that area because it is wetlands? There's nowhere else in the entire town of Old Bridge?
Ms. Jocnowitz, you've seen many of these over the years. You've been here to comment on many applications. And you know that they have, the applicant has the right to be heard, and the board judges it on the merits of the case only.
Of course, I do. I guess what I'm asking, I guess I'm asking the board.
It's none of my business what, why, if they looked somewhere else, or they didn't.
I'm asking the board.
We're just looking about this one property.
Okay.
And that's all we're going to make a decision on.
So you're making a decision to go from residential to commercial?
That's what they're asking for.
I know. That's the decision that you were going to make, whether you're going to switch it from-
This board will have to decide whether the D1 use variance will be approved for them or not.
Okay. Would you make that decision prior to the state making a decision on Route 18 access?
It could be, because it's conditional.
Okay, so would you consider, for now, to shelf this until, no disrespect, until the state-
Now, let me explain something else to you. That's not my decision. The attorney has a right to prosecute his case here. He has. He's presented witnesses. He also has a right to ask for a continuance and not take a vote tonight because we're lacking members, or he could force a vote. That's not my decision to make. I can't tell him, that's it, go home.
And tonight's decision is to vote whether or not to bring a commercial?
Mr. Chairman's comments were correct, but the, if the applicant does request the vote, the request would be for the use variance to permit the commercial use. That is accurate. But the board is not making the decision yes or no until the motion is made at the applicant's request, which, as the chairman just indicated, the applicant may very well request this to be carried, because there are five members, and he does require, if there are five members, a yes vote from every single individual, because it does require the supermajority.
And I would like to point out that this is a bifurcated application. We are here seeking the use variance only. So if the board does act favorably, we would be back before this board with a full site plan application, preliminary and final major site plan. So this is not, this is just the first step in the event it does get approved. There are additional steps. And I understand your question about DOT and the DEP, but those are, and would be conditions of any approval. So if there was an approval granted, it would be conditioned upon those also being granted. If we didn't get those approvals, this approval would go away. It would be useless.
Wait, the approval, wait, if these folks decided tonight to vote, or you asked them to vote, to go from a residential to commercial, and all of a sudden, the state said no, or the DEP said no, or everybody else said no, we would still have the plan approved for a commercial build on that site, even if it wasn't this item?
No. So we are here for this particular application. We're not changing the zone. We're not proposing a zone change. What is being proposed tonight is a use on a, in a zone that is not permitted. Not, so technically, it's the same zone. It would remain the same zone. The board would grant, if they decided to act favorably, would grant the application so that this use could be utilized on this site only. If, for whatever reason, the DOT or the DEP reject our proposal, and any subsequent amendments, then unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to develop the site. And whether or not this use variance is granted or not, it would be useless.
Okay. So let me get this straight. You want to build a 100,000 square foot building on a residential property with a use variance only, right? That's basically it. And if the state, DEP, or any other institution decides that you're not going to do that, all of this goes away. So this is all just a financial waste of money to the organization that you're representing?
Unfortunately, that is the procedures that are required for any application, whether it is a use variance application. If this was a permitted use in the zone, and we were asking for access off of Route 18, we would still have to file an application with the DOT to get an approval. And if the DOT rejected that approval, we would not be able to utilize the site as proposed.
So then you would go back to us again? And when I say us, of course, the town, you would go back to this group again and then ask for access from Pine Street, right? I'm just, I'm just asking, say theoretically, the state says, no, no way, heck, heck no, we're not doing this. And, but you've already got this, you've got this application in, and the committee's already approved this build. Would you go back and say, hey, look, we couldn't get it on Route 18, you know, the, right? But would you reconsider Pine Street?
We would have to come before the board.
Wait, wait, wait. Before we answer this, is it appropriate that the questions are being directed? Well, you know-
I'm not sure. I don't know. They are answering them, so I-
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. So the answer is yes, because the questions are directed. So during this period of time, any public, person from the witness, from the public is allowed to cross-examine the applicant and the applicant's professionals as to their proofs. Now, if they are providing purely comments, the comments are made directly to the chair. But during the questioning and the cross-examination, they are directed towards the applicant's professionals. So it's one of those things that they are, they are required and permitted to do, and we can't stop it. We can limit the timing. We can limit the redundancy of the comments, and we can limit the scope once we get off track. Like, right now, we're getting off track because the testimony is not focused on what is being proposed, and the cross-examination is not being what's on proposed. So I could ask the witness to go back to where the proofs that have been presented for use variance onto Route 18, and if there's any comments or testimony or cross-examination that you have as to whether or not that is adequate.
Okay, I do. I do, because I missed the last meeting. So how's this? Can you show the map delineating all the wetlands before this building is put up?
It has been filed.
I know it has, but could you provide it right now for the audience? Would that be possible, sir? Chairman?
I think we could probably put it up.
Okay.
It's also sort of right on this exhibit.
This one?
Yeah.
And it's going to show the map of what this is, right there, on top of it, right? No?
It's all overlaid onto each other. So this exhibit, Exhibit A4, is the site plan, landscape plan overlaid onto what is called a survey.
Just for the record, it's A3.
A3. Thank you so much. A4 is the render. You're correct, of the building.
Thank you.
A3 has on it survey conditions. Survey is a map of existing documentation of the property. Also on here, and you can see, following my laser pointer, a wetlands consultant, and then the DEP verified the delineation of the freshwater wetlands. On top of that, they also impose a 50-foot transition area buffer to protect the wetlands. Our development is completely outside of both the wetlands and the associated buffer with them, not just the building, but the parking driveway and all of the stormwater and site improvements. So none of the environmental features that are existing on site are going to be modified or disturbed as part of the redevelopment project.
And that beige-looking thing is your retention pond of whatever you want to call it these days?
It'll be an infiltration basin.
So you're going to, you're going to have an infiltration basin next to the wetlands, which is going to dry it up?
It, it won't dry it up, ma'am. It actually will. A wetland is actually a natural drainage feature.
I understand what it is.
It's low-lying. It actually acts as a water quality feature in a natural environment. So putting a stormwater basin next to wetlands, they are one in the same. They do the same function. Ours is more controlled and modeled for our development, of course. It's custom and specific. But stormwater in New Jersey is heavily regulated in the year 2025. We don't just have to comply with Old Bridge and their ordinance. We have to comply with Free Old Soil Conservation District, in this case NGDOT. And there is also state regulations under 7:8. So there's about four prongs of different jurisdictional agencies, each with their own engineers, that will be reviewing our plans and drainage report to ensure that basin that's to the northern side comply with all standards and recommendations.
Do we have any hooker and ladder trucks in the neighborhood that can actually handle a fire? This is to the board, Chairman.
So at this point, we are really getting into testimony.
I know, we're getting into the weeds.
No, no, but we're getting into, not even the weeds, but site plan as well. Like, this is specifically for bifurcated use variance.
Okay.
And whether or not this town can adequately service the property for fire safety, or if the property has adequate fire and safety, that is a question that for a weather site plan. That's a site plan question, not that we're here for use variance. So I need you to, again, focus your testimony and focus your cross on the use that is proposed, which is a, is a self-storage, which is purely indoor.
A three-story self-storage.
Correct. So focus the cross on that.
That has glass windows, right? Glass windows up three stories? Is that what I saw, sir?
Yes.
So you realize, folks, on the, on the dais, that we already have enough bird strikes, although it is a much nicer thing to have a feature like that. It's bird strikes. And to this woman's comments over here, where there were, excuse me, I just stepped on this. There, you'll have, I've already picked up at least three owls in, on 1034, 109, that were bird strikes to buildings, glass building windows like that. And if there is colonies of birds, they are like owls. You weren't going to affect them.
Again, just another thing. Did you do an environmental impact study yet, or no? Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. Was it, there was no endangered or critically endangered species found on the property?
Josh Seawold will answer that.
That's correct, Mr. Solicitor. If there were-
There were no, there were no box turtles? Eastern box turtles?
No, ma'am. And real quick, I want to answer every question that you have, so that you feel comfortable. If there were threatened endangered species on this property, that buffer would go from 50 to 150 feet. The reason the DEP put a 50-foot buffer is because they do not have certain things like box turtles. There are certainly wildlife and animals out there, and that's why they give you the 50-foot buffer. If there was something that was more TNE-related, there would be a larger buffer on it.
So the reason why I asked the applicant to provide that is because while it is understandable that any development is going to disturb wildlife, unfortunately, that is the problem with development. So while it is a good concern, they comply with their obligations. So there's nothing more that we can ask or they can do. They can volunteer, but it's, we're limited.
Okay, I do understand that. Who does your surveys for wildlife? Who did it?
The DEP.
The DEP, the DEP actually came out and walked through the property and looked for turtles?
The DEP, whenever we file a wetlands application, they will receive a report, a study, and a plan. They will then walk the property to find two of the three prongs that trigger wetlands, and then depending on the classifications of vegetation and wildlife, triggers 0, 50, or 150-foot buffer. We do not get to make, we make a recommendation based off of our experience and expertise, but the DEP is the one who issues the permit and determines the buffer. So the state of New Jersey determined it is a 50-
So the state actually did it, and I'm just, this is learning for me, too, so I apologize.
No, it's okay.
So the state comes in and looks at the vegetation, the flooding, or, you know, the water, the water in there, and then makes a determination. They don't actually do a, excuse the expression, a body count?
I'm familiar with the phrase body count.
I know. Well, the body count is usually not used as a phrase, but I'm, tortoiseshell count, tortoises. They don't look for, what time of year do they do the inspections?
I don't even know if this man is qualified to say what the DEP does and doesn't do.
No, no, no. I just was wondering. That's why I said it's a learning thing for me. He may not, he may not be qualified, but he may know.
Ms. Jocnowitz, you're being difficult in the sense that-
I'm not trying to be difficult, but I, but this is, this is the thing. As I've sat here tonight, I've received nine texts for wildlife in this area. So no, so let me explain to you. Part of what the reason why I ask these questions is because I know what's going to come next. It's just like Texas Road, which was flooded with dead tortoises.
It has nothing to do with this application, ma'am.
Right, no, no, this is not, I know that. I understand that.
This application is for this particular block and lot.
I totally understand.
What happened somewhere else has nothing to do with it. I'm trying to be cooperative. I'm trying to let you ask the right questions, but you're just searching.
Okay, so no, no, I said, so-
He answered, the DEP controls that.
That's why I was asking, because I said it's learning for me, for explaining it to me. That's, so they come and they just look at the water table. That's basically what they did.
I don't think he said that.
Well, no, no, beyond that, the trees, the vegetation?
There are three prongs of what determine is a wetland.
I understand what those are, because I have wetlands.
I'm going to ask the applicant, can we just candidly, can we get back to the use?
Okay.
You're really going so far off.
Okay, so we're going off, yeah, so we're going off topic. So the topic is whether or not you should create, allow for a commercial variance for a building. And, you know, I can guarantee that you, that everybody on the streets doesn't want that. I don't know what you guys are going to do, but I can tell you that, you know, the talk on the chat is not that. It's a shame that they're not all here, but I can't control humanity. I can only say that I know what's coming next, because you could answer my phones for me, if you want.
Thank you.
I know, I know. I don't want to answer it either.
Thank you, ma'am.
We thank you for your concern.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
The board has heard your commentary.
Yep. I hope, I hope you will vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else here in the room? Okay, ma'am. What attorney will swear you in?
Please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm, tell truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Please state your name and spare your last for the record.
Caitlin Massaro, M-A-S-S-A-R-O.
And your address, please.
24 Darwin Road.
Take it away.
Okay. I'll be brief. I thank you, everybody, for their time. My husband and I are from Union County. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that area, completely overdeveloped. So when we were looking for a house 12 years ago, we drove into Old Bridge, particularly in this area, and we loved all the trees on Route 18. We're thinking, oh, my God, it's going to be beautiful during the fall, during the summer. And, you know, I appreciate you guys are doing your job for your client, but I'm afraid we're kind of going down a little bit of a slippery slope if we're starting to have to give all these variances to make a residential street have a self-storage unit. I just kind of feel like, are we going to become the next Union County where, you know, you barely see a tree anymore? So I just kind of wanted to put that out there. I have everybody's concerns, which we already went over with, especially the water and all of that, and that was addressed. But I just, you know, as an Old Bridge resident, I don't want to lose its charm, like Suburban Caps being a mom-and-pop kind of shop that they want to leave to their children. I'm just afraid we're going to start to lose what Old Bridge, you know, really drew me to. So I just wanted to say that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just writing one thing down. Anyone else? Come on up, sir. Mr. Agarama, he's gonna put you under oath again, okay?
You're swearing me in again?
Yes.
Absolutely. You swear or affirm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name, and spell your last for the record.
Frank Aragona, A.R.A.G.O.N.A.
And your address, sir.
I live at 11 Pine Street, across the street.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought they're adding trees. They're not taking trees. Am I wrong? Because only thing I want to say is the trees they add, are there gonna be trees like that's there? That'll, actually, you won't even see this building. The trees are 40, 50-foot tall, right now, the ones that are there. The buffer from the next house on that property is so thick and tall. If they're gonna do that on Pine Street, the only place you could see this building is on 18, where you enter and leave.
Well, you can't speak from the audience, please.
I have no trees there.
Frank, Frank, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you, but sir, but we can't have a separate conversation.
Okay.
You can address counsel, or you can address me, or the witnesses that have testified. All right? Thank you, sir.
I thought there was trees everywhere there. All, that whole back section of that property, you know, what's that? That's, that's north. North is tremendous trees.
If you look at the picture here, sir, north is, north is to the top.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I guess...
Pine Street is to the bottom.
Pine Street is where's the least amount of trees, and they say they're gonna fill in where there isn't. So from my house, I'm not gonna see this building at all.
You're next door or across the street?
I'm right across the street. If they're 30-foot tall...
You could ask Mr. Seawold about the trees.
So, so yes, there's about a 65-foot buffer that we are adding along Pine Street. As you know, out there today, there's existing structures, pavement, and things like that.
Yeah.
There will now be a 65-foot, multiple landscape-wide buffer area. They will not be 30 feet when they are planted. That's why, though, in the 65 feet, there are multiple tiers. So if it was a smaller area, you would have a single row or maybe a double row, and you'd be able to see through it. The point and the benefit of a 65-foot buffer, so that you have at least five or six rows of trees that are all meandering and interlocking, so that you don't see across...
Through it, but they're not gonna be tall. I could see over them.
So, I'd note, Mr. Solicitor, if you would let me go, so that, this is a use variance. As part of site plan, the board could take into consideration, why don't you put a 10-foot berm, and then these six-to-eight-foot trees on top of it to block your line of sight, which would be a very reasonable and a understanding condition that the applicant would say yes to. Tonight, because we're not talking about those details, all I can say to you is that should the board vote favorably, they could add any condition they wish, including adding a buffer, berm, and details that would be later than reviewed back at this board. So we don't have those kind of details yet, but the trees generally done in landscaping are between six and eight feet at initial planting. Certain species grow one to two feet a year, others a little bit slower. It would be our intent to make sure that this would be on top of a berm, so that as you drive down Pine Street, or being across the street, which sounds like your property, you would not see it. But those details are not on this exhibit, but that would be any type of potential condition the board would consider.
So you're not take, like, they're concerned that you're taking away from the trees. Those trees are all staying, right?
No, we're only adding. So those large trees to the west are remaining. Anything to the north, between us and Darwin, is, is protected, not just by Old Bridge, but by the wetlands. And, and I did testify earlier, I appreciate you bringing up, the development has never been redeveloped back there. So those trees are between 40 and 50 feet, and there are a lot of pines out there. All of those are to remain the same.
Okay, all right. And even on my street, there's some that are still tall.
There's some very nice tall...
They'll stay?
Those are all staying, the evergreen. Actually, the original application in June, we had to take out some of them for our driveway, and putting the driveway on 18, all the existing trees that are on Pine are to remain. And that would, again, be, this kind of goes back to someone else's question, although we're here for the use, the board is voting on the use for this land. So should we substantially change it, we would have to come back for an amended use. So they're locking in this to the use.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aragona. Anyone else? Last chance, anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna close the public portion on this matter. We come to an end. What is it, what is it you want to do, Mr. Alfery?
Yes, Chairman, I do appreciate the time tonight and hearing all of the testimony, but unfortunately, based upon the lack of members, we would like to carry the application to the next available date.
I fully understand, and I want to thank you for altering and informing the board and the public as well of what your changes have been. It probably might serve you better being off of Route 18 than on that street, and there's no exit whatsoever onto.
That's correct.
Just the other thing, too, is if you can please have the dates for the DEP and NJDOT, that'd be fantastic, so we can have it on record. Thank you.
And I apologize, Mr. Chairman, just housekeeping. I assume you continue to leave time?
Yes.
Thank you.
We need that.
That was important.
Okay, I'll get you a date. This isn't gonna be easy.
October 16th.
That was pretty easy.
Okay.
Yeah, October 16th.
Okay.
For people in the courtroom, before you, before you leave, I'm just gonna tell you one thing, this matter is not gonna be voted on tonight. They, they have asked for a continuance. The fact, the reason being, as explained, this requires a supermajority, so not just four of seven, it's five of seven. So they need five positive votes. There's only five board members here. I'm assuming they doesn't want to roll the dice and have one not, or, or everyone go in his favor or not go in his favor. So that's the reason it's being carried. You're not resting your case, I assume either. There may be supplemental when we come back, that the applicant has the right to put on the record. The matter is gonna be scheduled for October 16th. Please check the website and the agenda prior to coming. Make sure that it hasn't been canceled. Tonight, for whatever reasons, three of the applications canceled. So I strongly suggest, go on the Old Bridge Township Board of Adjustment. The agenda is there for each upcoming meeting. You can read just what I have here, a full agenda, and there's copies, I'm sure, available. So check on that. But right now, it's scheduled for October 16th. There'll be no further notice, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay. You're not gonna, if you're in the 200-foot zone, you're not gonna get another notice. Put it on your calendars, October 16th. Check that day. Make sure that it's on the schedule, because that's, right now, that's when it's planned to be reheard. There always is a public portion at every meeting. So when I ended the public portion tonight, I have to open it up again when they come back. So anyone that wishes to speak will be entertained as well at that next meeting.
How many times can we...
Well, they're not adjourning it, they're carrying it, ma'am.
So how many, can I just keep going on?
Well, I don't want...
I'm just gonna...
Yeah.
Public comment is closed, but what I am gonna say, just, it's a, under the municipal land use law, it's a discretionary function. Now, they've presented all their proofs. It's not the applicant's fault that a full quorum's not here. If this was this case where the applicant kept adjourning the application because they didn't want to appear because their professional wasn't available, the board could dismiss the application with prejudice. But they're here, their full team is in tow, and it's just unfortunate that there's not a full quorum. Now, they would need every single board member here to vote yes. If one board member voted no, the application's denied. So the applicant is well within its right, and if the board did reject, deny the request, we would probably be sued and lose on appeal.
I agree. I would do the same thing if they're doing that. But if next time they reach out, nobody's seen that there's seven people, but if, and they say two, I don't want to vote, we'll do it again, or...
No, they could make that request, and the chair could always say, no, we're gonna have a vote today, because the board makes the motion. But candidly, I have never seen somebody request a, another carrying when there's seven members, because then they're risking not having a quorum at the next meeting. You're welcome.
Okay, so that's all I have to say on this matter. Please mark it down. There will be another public portion, as I explained to everybody, October 16th. Mr. Alfery, thank you and your team for the testimony.
I apologize to the board for, I didn't mean any harm, I just...
No, no. It's a good question.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you for your time tonight, guys.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alfery. Board members, I don't think there's any general public comments other than what we heard, so I'm gonna close that public portion. Maureen, 18th of September, two weeks from today, is our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's about all I have. Anybody else have anything? Anything else you want to tell us?
No.
Counselor, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And for your counsel. Someone want to move for an adjournment?
I believe I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.
Thank you.